Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Mayor, if you'd be so kind, we'd from Consent Agenda number, from the Consent Agenda, we'd like to remove number three, the applicant themselves withdrew.
Yes.
And we'd like to add the letter that was circulated, I believe, yesterday for the Lions Club regard Halloween.
Yes.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
And we are actually going to delay public comment at the moment because we do have an executive session that we are going to enter regarding litigation and just to save the time of the attorneys that we will be paying, save the village a little bit of money, hopefully. So I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session.
Aye.
Aye.
Donald Kerr on New Paltz.
Oh, that's, that's.
Yes, I have some business cards to establish. My profession is water. And I own two companies in New Paltz, both related to water, drinking water.
Thank you.
You know I have them.
I do.
I'd like to move that we keep the hearing open that was regarding the local law reorganizing the environmental policy board.
Sure, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're officially in our meeting.
On September 11th, there was a meeting that was supposed to be and was in court about the topic of drinking water in New Paltz. And I wasn't able to be there. I was out of town. I did arrange for a colleague to be here. But my concern watching, you know, I got home from vacation. An hour later, I watched the meeting online, which means I had no life whatsoever. But I was concerned, my perception, and I wasn't in the room, my perception from watching the video, was that there seemed to be a strong disposition on parts of the board against considering using, treating and using the Walkeel River water as drinking water supply. And I felt checked, and I think the direct quote was, I think that in the last meeting, it was made very clear that the Walkeel is not an option. And I just wanted to ask that everyone keep a really open mind on that question because I think the expert, one expert view, and many expert views, is that the most efficient and the most cost-effective and the best option is actually to treat the Walkeel River water. What's being looked at right now is the possibility of drilling a well near the boat launch down in Springtown, and that would involve the cost of drilling and the cost of lifting and bringing it to the infrastructure. Another option is to drill out at the fairgrounds, which involve drilling and transporting for miles. And the cost of those 24 sections of pipe is somewhere between $800,000 per length. So we've got a big expense in pipe. And what I think is important for people to understand, it's very possible that the river out at the, the water at the fairgrounds would need the same exact treatment at the same exact cost as the Walkeel River water. That's really important to understand. And I think if the, if the tests show that the water out by the fairgrounds is quote-unquote "under the influence of the Walkeel River," if it's exposed to contaminants, it will require treatment. And the law doesn't say, it's just a little bit dirty, it'll be treated a little bit. If it's put in one of those categories, it requires the infiltration, clarification, ozone, ultraviolet, the same sort of treatment that'll be used at the Walkeel. And I think Riverkeeper did a favor in that we know, as depressing as it is, we know what's in the water at the Walkeel. Have to do further testing, of course, but it can be treated. And I've got a colleague who was here at the last meeting, actually canceled a meeting of his board to attend the 9/11 meeting, who is an expert in that area. And I'm gonna sit down and let him speak a little bit. Mr. Matthew Gheo doesn't like to tell his own story a lot, but I want to give you his resume. Did you have a question?
I have a lot, I mean, I know this is your field.
Prior to his current position, Matthew was in charge of the water chemistry lab at the City of Poughkeepsie.
He was here.
Yep. He operated that plant. He now operates the plant that also serves Northern Westchester and Indianport. So I really think that it's important that the board receive and really listen to expertise because it may be very different than your expectations. Specifically with regard to the Walkeel River as drinking water source. Everyone thinks yuck. I think yuck. But the technology is there where after treatment, it would be clean and crystal clean and potable and no regulations. Just want to ask you, please keep it up in mind, and please don't reject the Walkeel River, you know, as an option, because I think it's the best option.
Whatever I wanted to say, Don, we're meeting tomorrow night in June 10th, and this topic is on the agenda. And we're hoping the DEP is paying for this, so.
Who's we? The Village Board?
All the boards, the boat board. I mean, that is part of that August 15th meeting, they want to do more study.
I understand. Well, more study sounds good. I'll be out meeting of one of my companies tomorrow, and I won't be able to be there. I didn't know about that. But that's good to know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Matthew Gheo, Cardigan Dons, and I was here for my 11th meeting. And again, I ask that you guys take this and deal with an open mind and look at what science and what your funding in Phase 2 of the study is going to present to you. The Walkeel River is, again, not the ideal. We're fortunate to have water flowing through our town. You know, I talked to Don earlier, and I got, I deal with this all day long, and so I came home today, I just wasn't out in the mood, and he said, come on. And I said, okay, you know, as I'm driving my daughter to karate up at the Cherry Hill Plaza, I said, I have a real vested interest in this community. I live here, I've been here for 12 years, and I'm on a well like I indicated before, so my water supply is not a concern, but my community's water supply is a concern. And the DEP, I do need to go on the record with this, and I think before, in the last meeting, I indicated that they may not be trustworthy or reliable, and I need to make some clarification on that. They are very reliable and they are trustworthy. They supply us with water, but their infrastructure, like our infrastructure across the entire country, is at a point where it needs attention. And their attention needs, that we need to shut down. And what the board needs to fully understand is if something happens to that water supply, we still need the function as a community. That means we need to have our own water supply. So if we're gonna invest some money and capital into it, that capital needs to be permanent, long-term, and be able to suit our needs into the future, all right? DEP, we've become very complacent with the fact that we have this, you know, upwards of 500 million gallons of water flowing past our town in any given moment. That could very quickly go away if something happens to the infrastructure, and we as a community need to have an alternative. You as the board need to make decisions that you may not be fully versed in, and you're gonna need to hire a lot of consultants and engineers to make those decisions for you. And they come before you with their decisions, you need to listen to them with an open mind and open heart and just embrace what they're saying. You're paying them a lot of money, all right? There were some statements made about Riverkeeper that I think may have been taken out of context. A report that came out does indicate that that source of water is not the most ideal. It's a source of water, so you gotta keep that in mind, right? Like Mr. Kerr indicated, I did run the water treatment facility at Poughkeepsie, which is off the Hudson River. We had our issues with MTBE, atrazine, PCBs, you name it, we had to deal with it. So keep that in mind, right? So again, what happened too is, the thing that you have to keep in mind is that if the DOH, Department of Health, will have ultimate say of what will be our supply of water. And again, if groundwater is determined under the influence, it will be held to the same regard as surface water. So if we have those two decisions to make, the question becomes, do we want to drill a well and feel good about drilling that well and pulling groundwater out and treating it to the same level as surface water, or do we just want to pull it from the river and be done with it? So make some, you have to make some really hard decisions as a board. It's gonna be hard, and you're gonna hire a lot of people, pay a lot of money, listen to what they have to say, all right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Thank you. Thank you, Don and Matt.
Any of you have something?
All right. Well, I just have to.
Can we move to public comment?
I just want to say something real quick. I did, just so you all know, I did give Don the packet from, the initial packet from the DEP so that they could review it, so I was very comfortable with having them take a look at it the way they did.
Do you have a question? Sure?
Did you also approve DEP's report?
That's what I did.
And the minutes of.
No, that I haven't. I need paper sign.
When DEP made its presentation, it was asked, is available to review?
Okay. I'd like to. They might want to stay.
I'm not chasing them out.
Okay. No. All right. Any announcements?
Local Food Week. Local Food Week is next week. It's every year since 2011, first week of October, the 1st through the 7th. And we have a number of participating restaurants, but we encourage everybody to ask any restaurant that you eat in for local food, to encourage participation in our local economy and supporting our local farms. And Eat in the Street is Sunday, October 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And come out and enjoy music, food, and fun.
Okay. Anyone else?
On Church Street. Thanks.
I'll move to consent agenda.
Okay.
Joe, have you had an opportunity to review the, what we're going to approve for the bargain 2?
Yeah.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The first item up, actually, I'd like to approve bills and claims.
We did, didn't we?
Oh, no. Are there any purchase orders you're holding out?
No.
Do you need me to sign it?
I'll move it, yes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's go ahead to our regular meeting. The first item on the agenda is a presentation by Michael Katz regarding Veridian Renewable Energy. You can have a seat if you'd like, or you can stand, whatever you're more comfortable with. Hello, thanks for being here.
Thank you very much for having me. As you know, my name's Michael Katz. I am a resident of the village, local business owner, and independent associate of Veridian Energy. Veridian is a socially responsible energy company, energy supply company, that provides clean energy choices for their customers at competitive rates. The company was founded on the idea that customers shouldn't have to choose between affordability and sustainability. And Veridian customers save money over time while also being part of a huge collective impact simply by making a switch and using cleaner energy every day in their homes and businesses. In just four short years, our customer base has already prevented over 2 billion pounds of carbon emissions. And at the same time that we've done that, here in the Central Hudson Zone, customers have enjoyed historic savings of 14% since our market entry in June of 2011. I myself have been a customer of Veridian since they first came to New York State, and I'm proud to have saved substantially on my utility bill over the past two years, while at the same time being a part of that initiative. And I have here for you, this is a historical rate comparison since our market entry between Veridian Energy and Central Hudson, and I also have a copy of my energy choice bill comparison, which is a function that Central Hudson offers any customers that make a switch to a third-party supplier, and you can see what you paid versus what you would have paid. This is two-year history.
When you say Central Hudson.
Yes.
Would you please clarify that you're talking about electricity or natural gas?
Well, actually, we deal with both. I'm talking specifically about electricity because that's what I have in my home.
Just want to be clear.
But yes, Central Hudson is a utility, and they continue to have a monopoly on the delivery and service of electricity and natural gas. But thanks to deregulation laws, there's a whole burgeoning industry of third-party energy supply companies like Veridian, and customers have a choice. And there's a lot of reasons why people make a choice. Mostly it has to do with competitive costs. There's also incentive programs, like you might see with a credit card sometimes, where you know, you're gonna get bonuses for going with this company. And the other main factor is green content. And traditionally, green content is something that you're gonna pay a premium for. And we've kind of created a niche in the market by having a hybrid product that allows us to bring renewable energy. I do, actually. I apologize because I only have a couple copies, one copy of this, but I do have several of these. I also have here a energy choice comparison from a very satisfied Main Street business that switched their bill over just three months ago. And needless to say, they're pretty happy campers over there. I've been doing this for six months now as an associate. After a year and a half, I sold what I was saving and said, I gotta spread the word about this. In the short period of time that I've been associate, I'm proud to have personally involved several New Paltz establishments, including but not limited to the New Paltz Regional Chamber of Commerce and the Auster County Fairgrounds. Every year, Veridian publishes a sustainability report. And this report, which is audited by Ernest D. Young, it details the green purchasing that Veridian does, and it also talks about our sustainability efforts, and it really sets a benchmark in the industry for transparency in reporting. And again, I apologize, I only had one copy of it. I was trying real hard to come up with five of them, but I, you know.
Michael, do you need these back?
No, they are, they are yours.
Distributed copies to the board.
Certainly, yes, absolutely.
Actually, I had a sneak preview of that for Stuart Glenn.
I have a couple of the brochures that are, you know, much abridged version of the sustainability report. So one of the other things that really makes this company outstanding is they have a slogan, "Power with Purpose," and it's more than just a tagline. Their initiative, their sustainability initiative is a commitment to local and global change. And on a global stage, in the past several years, Veridian associates and executives, including the CEO, Michael Falkquist, have made several trips to the Amazon to plant trees in deforested sections of the rainforest.
Can I come next time?
They've also brought renewable energy to villages in Ghana and just a few months ago in Indonesia.
Cool.
Yeah, it's really awesome. On a local level, they often host sustainability events in local communities to get associates and customers and friends and neighbors and the like out to be, doing productive things in the community. How, we've seen it most locally here. Earlier this year, they put bat houses up on the Poughkeepsie rail trail to keep the mosquito population in check. And they also, this summer, did whitewashing of buildings in New York City to keep energy efficiency at a high rate in those buildings. And, you know, I think that this is just the, a great thing for the village to be able to benefit from, at the same time saving money and having cleaner energy in their home and in our buildings and everything that we have. So one of the things I wanted to call attention to is that in recent months, other municipalities around here have switched their meters over. In past four months or so, the town of Hudson and the villages of Beekman, Rhinebeck, and Fishkill have all switched their municipal meters over. And one of the things I tell my prospective customers, do your homework and then do it again, because I'm excited for what you're gonna find. So obviously, I know this warrants due diligence, and I would encourage you to maybe reach out to some of the board members in these municipalities and see what they have to say about it. That said, there's one more reason why I really think that this is a perfect switch for the village of New Paltz, and that is that Veridian, in addition to everything else they do, also partners for free with non-for-profit organizations with what we call a residual fundraising program. And it's a great approach for these organizations to be able to raise funds without tapping into and overburdening their members and their supporters. And once a group has decided to participate in the residual fundraising program, their supporters simply switch to Veridian, and every time, they now pay a bill that they're happy with because they're saving money and they've got a green product in their home, the sponsoring organization can get a piece of that. And the New Paltz Community Foundation is just one such organization, and as of this morning, they are in. So in addition to everything else that we've got, and again, these other municipalities have made the switch just because they see the benefit in having cleaner energy at a better rate, we could also be kicking back to organizations whose sole purpose is to kick back to the municipality, so.
Could we have a list of the municipalities with their contact persons?
I would be very happy to have that for you and get it to you in short order.
Thank you.
Are these for us to keep?
You may certainly keep them, yes. Absolutely. And again, I apologize, I only had but the one copy.
Katie could, to Katie.
So that said, I want to thank you again for having me. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I am completely available for you.
Where can you get your electricity from?
Central Hudson is still my utility. That is the case for any of, if you're gonna switch to a third-party provider, the only thing that's changing is supply. And let me back up. Are you asking where Veridian purchases the energy from?
Well.
Okay. Well, in all of our markets, and we do have markets in nine states plus the District of Columbia, and we do our best to source it as locally as possible. In New York, a great deal of it comes from Niagara, hydroelectric, and wind farms between Syracuse and Buffalo. Again, it does vary from state to state. The sustainability report that I had there does give you a complete listing of every renewable energy certificate, when it was purchased, where it was purchased, when it was sent.
In that, in brand.
Yep. And when those racks were retired.
And then you have to rent the lines from Central Hudson?
We don't rent the lines from Central Hudson. Central Hudson and all utilities still have a monopoly on the delivery and service.
There's still like the distribution source.
Precise.
But when the deregulation happened, it was the suppliers and the distributors became something that wasn't necessarily the same.
Exactly, exactly. And the utilities are not allowed to profit from customers on the supply portion of their bill, so they encourage you to make a choice. And you've probably seen emails and letters at home saying, "Not go Veridian." I tell you, go Veridian, but they're telling you to make a choice. They actually charge a small nominal fee if you haven't made a choice because you're forcing them to purchase energy on your behalf, so.
It's actually, it's on the bottom of the Central Hudson bill.
Yep.
Except if you're using a secondary source provider or a third-party provider.
Exactly. It says, you know, you may choose another supplier for this portion of your bill.
I have a question. Does Veridian, so Veridian, basically, you said you had these certificates with these energy suppliers. Is Veridian looking at building any of their own, like solar fields or anything like that? I mean, this is, it's okay if you're not, I'm just kidding.
Right, no, at this time, that's not where we're at. Although we did, somewhat to the effect of that, we did just announce that we have exclusively partnered with SolarCity, which is the country's largest European.
Okay, yeah, I know about them.
So we're now doing referrals there. So the last time when I'm talking to people, they're like, oh, like, you mean you do solar? I'm like, actually, we don't. Actually, now we do. I can refer you to somebody, so.
So if we, I mean, and this is, you might not have an answer to this, but I'm just kind of brainstorming here. So if we were signed up with Veridian, and we were also looking at installing some kind of, you know, we've applied for grants with the town to do a solar farm at the town transfer station, the landfill, if we were looking to do that, could that be where we end up getting our energy from through Veridian? Could that become one of your certified sites?
I don't know how that would work. I don't see that being the case, because what we're doing is whenever we don't own the sites, we just purchase the energy from the site. Now, I know, as per that report, that we definitely do purchase excess energy created from solar. Let's say, you know, Rebecca had panels on her house and she was creating 10,000 kilowatt-hours a month that only used eight.
Right.
That surplus is gonna go back to the grid, and we're certainly one of the companies that will buy that even on a small level. But that doesn't mean we're doing it everywhere, and honestly, that would be something that I would kick up to corporate to have the real answer to that question.
Right.
However, with respect to our partnership, it's certainly something that, you know, we might consider, you know, make a request for a proposal if you were looking to do that. Either way, I would say that we could certainly be used in conjunction with any of the plans to be solar, because until such a time as the village is completely generating a surplus of energy, there's still a little bit that's coming out of the grid.
Right.
Obviously, you want to make it less and less, and when that day comes, believe me, I will applaud it.
I do believe that.
In the meantime, this is a very, pretty great option.
Cool. Is there any, I mean, you talked about programs in other countries getting them on renewable energy. Are there any kinds of more localized grants or, you know, or services to help us find grants?
I don't know so much about grants, but it's more about like volunteer work and, you know, associates of Veridian coming out and sponsoring local events.
Okay, cool.
Just recently, I did see something to the effect of, hey, we're accepting proposals for what we could do in your neck of the woods.
All right.
So I'm all ears as far as, you know, what kind of ideas can we send back to them?
Cool.
And I think that it'd be great to have you come to New Paltz and do something. I don't even know what, but I'm sure the possibility's minimal.
Yeah, all right, cool.
Does anybody else have other questions?
So if we, you know, if we were to move forward with this, our next step would be to just essentially look through that and contact you to sign up? Is that how?
Absolutely. And like I said.
That would be a request for proposals.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, I mean, maybe the question actually isn't directed to you. It would do, do we have to have like a three-bid policy for something like this? Would that, this fall under that? Because we have the procurement policy, but this fall under, having three bids? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You sticking around?
Yeah, for a little while.
All right. There are a few other items on the agenda. We have two people in the room who are here for executive session, and just to keep them from staying too long. Do you, are you in any hurry to? I know Rich Casano's in a hurry to get back home, so I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
For the purpose of?
Joe, would you consider it?
Well, it's a, it's a real estate transaction. I guess that's what I'd say, and you should also mention that you're gonna invite Rich Casano.
Yes. But before we do that, could we just quickly have Joe do 105 so that people can go home that are here?
Okay, is that gonna be quick?
It will be quick.
Okay, all right, let's do that. Okay. So you're withdrawing a motion? Yes. Temporary withdrawing. Sorry, Rich.
Is that okay with you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So by way of update on 105, Figina, the injunction was filed, as we said that it would be and as the board approved last month. There have been discussions with counsel for Mr. Henry. It would be inappropriate to disclose in detail the nature of those discussions, but there is a, what I'll term, sort of a standstill agreement proposed, which the board discussed in executive session as part of a litigation matter, which I'll ask the board to publicly approve as they did in executive session, that will require certain, will impose certain restrictions and significantly limit the short-term rental operation while the board considers a potential change in the law to address it. So I think that's as far as is. So I think that's as far as is fair to go in the context of litigation, but I can tell you that there's been, you know, aggressive action taken to protect the neighborhood while the board considers these matters. So you should, you know, I know that it was important to you that the board moved quickly, they did, and there's been some positive results.
And once this is all agreed upon.
Right.
Then a copy will be available.
It'll be, at some point, it'll be public information and when it is, you'll have access to it too. So since we've done that, would the board kindly, would someone move to approve my acting on that standstill agreement?
I would like to approve your acting on the standstill arrangement.
And I'll second it with the understanding of the ZPA being included.
That's correct.
As discussed in the second session. All in favor?
I... Hey, quickly.
Yeah.
Where are we on the parking, no parking on Huguenot Street, which was proposed and Kurt was working on with you?
Yeah, well, I, what was I working on? I did not see such a proposal. Happy to act on it if you like, I mean, I can just draft it if you want, but I did look at you sent the email.
Yeah, what I sent you, okay, so would you do that for the next meeting?
I will, yes, well.
Two meetings.
If that's okay.
Well, yeah, whatever you agree with us.
Just in terms of the deadline, yes, well, the meeting I'm with you, yes.
And that's October.
Yep, second meeting of October.
And then would you also, I know you, I think you were in discussion with Mr. Lavala about how the current code could be changed for the historic districts, tightening up.
The short-term rental issue? The short-term rental issue?
No, the whole provision of the...
Oh, the whole issue? Yeah, I mean, again, I, it's more of a, that was more of a broader philosophical discussion than,
Could you make a...
as it was contemplated, would have started with the planner, but I, but I'm happy to pursue that.
I'm gonna then move that both the recommendation for no parking ordinance and also a recommendation from our attorney on what he proposes as a tightening of the code for the historic district being presented to the board, the second meeting in October.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you repeat what the second piece is, I understand the parking?
Well, we, when we talked about this, we had a three-pronged approach, and one of them was that we would look at the code regarding what is appropriate in the historic district and that we would consider proposed tightening up of that for clarification as to what is appropriate in that district. And you might consult the Historic Commission.
I will, and what I'm gonna say on that second piece, just so you don't feel like I've overpromised, on that piece, that will require, that will start, as I said, with more of a philosophical discussion and understanding of what
Right.
many of the stakeholders there may see.
And what our own Historic Commission...
So what I'll provide you with is sort of a report at that time of what I've, what I've sort of done. And then you can give me direction based on that and et cetera.
I don't have a second.
So I won't be coming back with a law on that.
That was, that was why I made that question.
Alright, thank you.
Second?
I did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that would be for October 23rd. Okay. Thank you, good to see you again.
She wanted to be executive session now.
You know, I'm wondering if we wanna continue having you, maybe we'll have to move more slowly.
She wanted to be executive session.
There's an election in 2015.
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session. For the purpose of...
Second.
Discussing a real estate matter. And you should mention again that you're gonna invite Mr. Casano.
And we're going to invite Mr. Casano into the room with us.
The second is?
Aye.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lisa, getting some exercise.
We're officially inviting Mr. Casano and Mr....
On executive session to interview, is that the proper term at 9:29?
Don't sit down, Sally.
We're almost done.
But can't I just say hello and meet him and move to do it?
We're going to do a second session.
You can walk in there and do that, it'd be awesome.
This is my second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you. I have a quick question, have you been to Alaska?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm from there.
Cool, where are you from?
Wow, well, Anchorage and also Yukon River, and I lived in Nome.
Oh, I was out there, no, I was in Homewood for two weeks.
My cousin lives there, I love it, the spit.
Yeah, so that's where I got...
He stole your heart.
Good night, Will.
I'll laugh with you after the meeting for a minute.
Okay, alright.
He's so great.
Next on the agenda, discussion on letter from Roddy Sura regarding water and sewer.
That is the strangest, I don't know what to do about that.
You know, I don't know what to do either because it was, it was an interesting, you know, the letter, the letter we got along with it.
Twenty times.
Was not a...
In one quarter. And they, and the meter said there was a leak.
Right.
And they went and they looked for the leak and couldn't find it. And now they have gone back, Rose, I called Roseanne because I just couldn't believe my eyes when I looked at this, and she said it's starting to read normal again. So there's something very...
Well, is it possible that there's merely a malfunction of the meter?
I would, I think Blue would have checked the meter.
Well, I, I thought he did, let me pull up the email, because I thought he said he did.
Well, I know, I mean, I also was wondering what this was about. And when I looked at the bill and I saw the amount of difference, and there is no other period of time during which there is any but a normal variation in usage.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, there's like Niagara Falls amount of water being used by this place. It makes no sense, and if there is no leak, then at least I would be suspicious about a malfunctioning meter. So I think we need at least...
So perhaps we should say that the meter should be replaced.
At least we need to have the meter investigated again,
And verified.
even if they've looked at it once before, to find out what might have happened to trigger, what triggers the meter other than water flow?
Water flow is the only thing, and it has to have gone past the meter because the leak can't be outside the meter, and he only has two bathrooms.
Yeah, there's nothing that makes sense about this, so it can't make sense out of this.
I guess I'm going to move that we ask the DPW to do a thorough investigation of the meter to verify that it is operating, and if it's not operating properly, then I would think we should refund the money.
Or what we should do is to adjust to an average of the quarters during the past thirty years.
It creates... No, because the new water rates when you...
New waters during whatever period of time, new waters.
And the new water rates are.
Well, you can pro-rate, you know, you can pro-rate the amount by the new rates.
What do you think? Joe, what do you think?
I'm very sorry, I was looking, I mean, I'm listening, but specifically, what's the question?
It really does, isn't...
Roddy Sura runs a service station on Main Street, Ottawa. Has gotten a bill from us about his water usage that is so far in excess of his typical bill
Of his typical...
that it's all, it's all of money, it makes no sense.
Right, that I saw, yeah.
And there's been one examination and there were no leaks found. And we have no reason to think that he even has a way to use twenty times the water that he would ordinarily use. So, I mean, I think, I think the motion to have another investigation of the meter itself or to deter, because if it's returned to normal, then it's not a leak either.
That's what I think.
Right.
So if it's returned to normal, then...
Something's wrong with the meter.
Something to the meter.
Or something else.
One would at least assume.
Okay, so do you second my motion?
I do.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can I just ask for a point of clarification?
Sure.
Because in order to adjust the average, I'm sure we'd have to come back to you at the first meeting in October, which would be very near the shut-off time for an unpaid bill, and obviously, we wouldn't be looking to pay the bill because there might be a possible adjustment. Does the board want to make a clarification that until this is satisfied, until you're satisfied with the results?
We won't shut off his water.
Oh, yes. I would think that would be automatic.
No, it's not automatic.
Well, it's not automatic, yeah, so, so.
No, absolutely, thank you.
Free clarification.
Accept that as an amendment or an extension of the motion?
How about an extension of the motion?
And will you inform Roddy if the board's decision...
Absolutely.
...is blue to investigate?
Okay.
So do you want to vote on the extension?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, next item, approval to obtain an engineer's survey for West Center Street.
I don't know if anybody needs to have any more information on this, but Tom and I would be happy to speak to it.
Sure.
Well, essentially, this came out of, I've been, I've been having discussion with the owners of Meets and Bounds because it's a bus shelter that we want to put in there, so he and I have been going back and forth, and he had something for us, which is that the end of West Center Street basically connects with the back of his property, and there's a small piece that definitely belongs to the village that we do not know the exact dimensions of because we do not have a survey map for it in the village archives. And, yeah, we don't, we don't have this, this piece of property identified, but part of the issue there is that people use it as a cut-through, and the owner of Westwood Meets and Bounds is worried about liability in terms of people walking down his driveway.
Not just walking, driving, because now people have removed huge boulders that were placed across the mud track, and now people can drive through, and they do, and you can tell that they drive through because they're tire tracks.
Exactly.
Joe, how does this piece get to the village?
It belongs to the village, it has belonged to the village.
It belongs to us.
How?
It's a paper, it's what's called a paper road, and I offered to buy this piece of property when I first moved here, and I was told that, no, the village would not alienate any of it. We were told also that the previous...
You don't want to buy it?
No, the previous... No, I might, I might, but I wouldn't. Now that, now that I'm part of the village, I don't want to alienate any of his property. The previous owner also had offered to buy this, the round tree,
Round tree.
and they, of course, had also been refused the purchase of it.
But you must know.
But I have tried to go to every office in this village that would have this information, and I have been told repeatedly by our treasurer, DPW, the, every office in this village that I have been able to go to has said, "We do not have an exact record of what we own here." You can see it though on the paper road. If you call up...
Is there a deed?
If you call up Zillow, Zillow will show it. But we don't have.
What's Zillow? Zillow is a real estate website.
A real estate website that can give you an overhead view.
Okay, I think, Joe, this is the thing to check deeds in the county with, don't you? Okay, let's check the county deed.
Well, we, Tom and I met with Blue and Nick at the, at the site, we did some measurements, and basically, what we have been told is the next step is to have the engineers, Berner and Larios, do a survey.
Can we...
Which is why this is on this, do we want to look for the deed first?
I think we want to look for the deed first.
Well, you know what, if you authorize that, Berner and Larios will do, will have to do that in order to do their surveys. You kill two birds with one stone. If you have legal look for the deeds, it really means a title search, not paying somebody else to do something for Berner and Larios.
I'm gonna authorize Berner and Larios to check titles and deeds and survey the paper, whatever you call it, at West Center Street.
How, um, don't we, wouldn't we want a proposal from them in terms of the survey?
No, they are engineers.
They're retained.
Okay.
I don't know, and it shouldn't cost very much.
Okay.
But they...
Well, they can give us a fee. Sounds good.
I mean, if we, you know, if you want, if you want to do it that way, I'm not opposed.
No, but my question is, why are we doing it?
Which is why I'm asking for that.
We're doing it for several reasons.
That's what you want.
Got it, there's a number of reasons.
We're doing it for several.
Yes, okay.
One of them is because there is a concern about, and I believe evidently legitimate concern about liability that leads from village property onto private property.
Private property.
And we do not know for sure what part of this is private and what part of it is village.
So that...
And we, the village, is not allowed to improve private property. So if we were to do something as the village on the part of the property that belongs to the village...
Right, that I understand, yeah, that, okay, timeout. That stuff I understand, okay, you don't need to give me that lesson.
Good job.
Thank you. I just would like to receive, if there is going to be an expense, that I would like to know, simple, how's that?
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, that's all, and right, so let's...
But there is, I mean, I don't know if you're interested in knowing about this, but it is a completely unmaintained piece of village property.
Right, I understand.
And we would, we would hopefully like, because of the amount of water that flows down Center Street, to put in a rain guard in there.
So can we, can we please start with getting...
Just the cost estimate from Berner and Larios?
Yeah, yes, please, I think it's reasonable to do that.
Then I'm gonna ask for an RFP.
Okay, that's fine.
And not have Berner and Larios necessarily do it. Because I think that if we're not going to use them and we're not going to, then I think it, given what Rebecca is asking for, we should find out if somebody can do it cheaper.
On that, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
That's what you're looking for.
Yeah, that's, I just don't like, I just don't like authorizing something without knowing in advance what the expense would be. And I understand all the reasons for doing it.
I don't think you're opposed to doing it, I'm...
Not at all.
With asking for, you know, so we're gonna do an RFP?
Yep. All in favor?
Did you get that?
I get, I get that the change that Angie turned into that Sally is requesting it.
I'm gonna withdraw that motion.
Okay.
And I'm going to move that we request an RFP to do the title search and survey of the village-owned property at the end of West Center Street.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of going to an RFP.
Okay, that's fine. Alright, approval of the Historic Preservation Committee's code revision, you...
Yeah, I mean, this has basically been, well, yeah, I mean, Sally has definitely seen this before. This has been sitting on the table for a long time, it should have been brought forward, and it essentially brings the Historic Preservation Committee, I think it's commission, actually, commissions, you know, a portion of the code up to speed with the rest of our code and the way things are noticed. So we actually have to set a public hearing for it because it's a code revision, we can't just approve it. So I would like to set the public hearing for our first meeting in October.
Second? All in favor?
Can I, even though I know you want to act on it, quickly, would you consider setting it for the second meeting?
Sure.
Because, number one, I'll be here, not that I think this is particularly controversial, but also, it would allow me, since it's now clear based on your decision that you're interested in moving forward on this, I could now take a closer look and just make sure if there's any specific, you know, just, just almost like stylistic things.
This is fun, but yes, we'll change that for our second meeting.
It also might need some tweaking in light of our earlier direction in terms of the historic.
Right, it allows me to just take a broader look now that I know the board wants to move on it, and I'll give you my notice on it.
So if you could give us your recommendations, et cetera, by the, by the next meeting, and then we'll go ahead and set the public hearing for the final.
Okay, so we...
So do we not want to set a public hearing tonight?
Yeah.
Rebecca, you just...
We can, okay, but you will get back to us with any...
Alright, so did I have a second for setting the public hearing on the, okay, on the second meeting in October?
October 23rd.
October 23rd.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Okay. Our next item is...
The discussion on the proposal. So I have been, George Seifer and I literally have called each other probably about every day to go back and forth on this, and he left me a message today. and, uh, he left me a message today, and I left him a message today, and, um, he is out of town for a week now, so, so hopefully, we will have more of a decision, basically, when we put this, when we first started talking about this, we went out, we, we had Bernier and Larrios look at it, we went out to bid, we got these bids, um, I'm sure all of you have seen the costs, but, um, and the one that I would like to go with, obviously the cheaper one, um, is a lot less money than we had anticipated being, but that doesn't mean that we still aren't going to try to get some of it paid for by the property owner, but, uh, you know.
And has he seemed?
Uh, we, I, we have not talked about the, the money, um, you know, I, I know that, uh, that has been the point
Okay.
that we've, we've been looking at.
So do you wanna move that we approve the pending agreement?
No.
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 No, I, well, I think, I, I think we should, because, you know, if we don't get any agreement, and we don't get a contribution of funds, you know, I'm hoping that we can still do it, yeah.
Said we would do it.
Um, but, you know.
So no action is needed to know.
No action.
Thank you for the update, okay, ProSource Technologies, it is a, have you all seen it?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so, um, essentially, it's for lead aid status, recreate New York Homes buyout program, um, assigning, authorizing New York State Homes and Community Renewal, HCR is her acronym, um, to take lead aided, lead agency status, it's, um, basically just saying that we agree with them being appointed as the lead.
And why don't I do it?
You, here's why, if you really have no, they're casting a broad net on any agency that might conceivably have some kind of approval authority.
Mm-hmm, which is all of these different.
You, right, um.
Is anybody else doing this?
Well, it, my position would be, you, you really have no basis for wanting to be the lead agency, in other words, allowing them to be the lead agency is by no means sort of acquiescing necessarily in anything that they might do or approve or propose, or, but the que- the only question is whether you object to them being lead agency, which by definition would mean you think you ought to be, and I can't see any reason why, why you would want to be the lead agi- why you'd even frank a jurisdiction to be the lead agency, I don't think you would win that dispute.
It's essentially where an interested party under, under Secra.
Right.
But I'm, I know nothing about this company, I don't know why they are coming to us, I don't know who recommended them, I know nothing about them.
Can you, can we table it, and you, you'll read the information?
I didn't read it all.
Can they come and talk to us?
Doesn't tell me anything about why they want this, right?
Can they come, I, I think we should have them come talk to us. We should have them come talk to us and explain it, and you can ask them all the questions you want.
I don't know at this moment if there's, if they have any competition in this area, if there is another company that's trying to get itself to be, you know.
Let, let me just say this, uh, is this, uh, another instance of the, uh, two-meeting rule where?
Did you speak with any of these people?
No.
This, no, have we considered this before?
No.
No, we have not.
Well, then, let's say that we've considered it tonight, and that by, uh, the next meeting, we either will have done, uh, sufficient investigation to be satisfied that we know who they are and why they should have lead agency.
And who's going to do that?
Well, I, I will at least look up who they are.
I, I mean, I have two.
Yeah.
But my, my, I guess my question is, when I get something like this, I wanna know who the competition is, you know, I wanna know why they think they can come and expect us to do this.
But do bear in mind that the, the, the entity seeking the lead agency status is not ProSource.
Exactly.
It's, it's HCR.
Right.
Right.
ProSource is circulating the notice of intent to act as lead agency, almost like a lawyer might in a certain project.
All right.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you shouldn't take exactly the course you discussed taking tonight, but I just wanna make.
I don't need someone to come, I just need to know.
So, well, let's say this, it's got a number here, right, it says, if you have any questions or any clarification, please contact, so, why doesn't one or more of you contact them?
Contact HCR.
Uh.
No.
This person here, it says if you have ProSource.
Yeah.
Ask them to explain their connection to the project.
I'll, I'll contact ProSource.
Okay, sounds fine, it's, it's basically working through, and state agencies.
Right, and you know, Tom, if you're gonna contact them, I would suggest that one of the things you ask them, I mean, this is a massive list of potential interest or involved agencies.
Right, exactly, it's like every, every county and municipality.
Why are we on this?
Yes.
Why are we, why are we being notified, what would our potential involvement be? Because that's the only relevant secret question there is when it comes to lead agency status.
Yes.
You're only an involved agency if you are going to potentially have to issue a discretionary permit
Yes.
in the process. So did they add you gratuitously, or is there some reason to believe you might actually be involved in the process? Um, and they should be able to answer that question, because, as Arianna said, it looks like they just named everybody in this alley.
Pointed out what my concern is for yourself.
I guess, you're, you're right, Sally, it's kinda what you said, why should I care? Why, you, you know what I mean, and if you don't care, then great, next, next week, or next meeting, you say, fine.
All right, that sounds good to me.
Point of clarification, we are not inviting them to the ten-nine meeting, but we will be hearing, but we, you would like to have, see it again on the agenda for the ten-nine?
Yes, and the reason why they wanna.
By the way, ten-nine is within, based on the date of this letter, the thirty days you have to state your objection, so the timing of that is fine.
All right, cool.
So it's a good.
Thank you for that. All right, are we, are we done?
We're done.
We're done.
Wait, no, you're not, you have the Lions Club.
Oh, oh, yes, I moved to approve the Halloween parade.
I thought that was part of the consent agenda.
I did too.
It's not, it's not on there?
We added it.
And then I have one thing to.
I didn't, I didn't hear it added, so that's fine, I mean, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, we took that off and added that.
Oh, okay, well, it's fine.
I have spoken.
I'm not opposed to it.
Sally, I have spoken to Chief, uh, Chief McGuire, and he's agreed for the firehouse point of view.
In our recommendation, this is one of the community parades, so.
Absolutely.
Are we going to do a curfew for Halloween?
I thought I. No curfew this year.
Dreamontini.
I'm joking.
Arianna's afraid she'll get arrested.
That's right, she'll be.
I'm working.
I used to love working on holidays for that reason, you couldn't get in trouble, you were on the right side of the, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Doesn't mean I won't get in trouble.
Do we need to pass the thing on the, uh?
Halloween.
It was, it was already part of the consent agenda.
No, what about the other item, the, uh, what, what was the, what was the one immediately before Halloween? Or was that it, that was the, the Lions Club?
Lions Club is on.
That's what I moved, I'll approve the Lions Club.
We already approved it as part of the consent agenda, yes, we, we removed one thing and added one, and that is.
That's what I did.
For move that is.
No, I said, yeah.
So are we done, can we?